Okay, we're ready.
Okay, welcome to the Montgomery County Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 27th. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be live streamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County. Will be available on local public access television DATV and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohio.org per guidelines approved by House Bill 197 and extended by House Bill 404. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Rice, here. Commissioner Lieberman?
She muted.
Here.
Okay.
And Commissioner Dodge, here.
Okay, County Engineer, Paul.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have a number of resolutions today. First is Resolution 21-440. To amend the agreement with American Structure Point, Inc. For the Alex Bell Intersection Improvement Project in Washington Township. By adding engineering services up to and during project construction with no increase in the cost. Then we have a couple of new agreements to authorize. 21-441 is with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. For professional engineering services for the Shank Road Bridge Replacement Project. At a cost not to exceed $167,196 through June 30th of 2023. And 442 is with DLZ Ohio, Inc. For engineering consultant services for the North Gettysburg Bridge Rehabilitation Project in the city of Dayton. At a cost not to exceed $105,546.18 through June 30th of 2024. And then we have several road closings for culvert replacements. 443 is Dayton-Farmersville Road between South Diamond Mill Road and Rhodes Road lasting approximately two days. 444 is Liberty-Eletron Road between Dayton-Farmersville Road and Helpel Road lasting approximately five days. And 445 is Frederick Pike between US 40 and Martindale Road lasting approximately two days.
I'm in for approval.
Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Common Police Court.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Common Police Court, we have Resolution 446. Submit a grant application to the State of Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction. Bureau of Community Sanctions for the use of funds made available under the targeted community Alternatives to Prison TCAP Grant for fiscal years 2022 and 2023 in the amount of $3,075,295.
I'm in for approval.
I second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Probate Court.
Under Probate Court, we have Resolution 447. Exercise the fifth renewal option with Sadler &amp; Neekamp Financial Services, Inc. DBA proware for software maintenance in an amount not to exceed 442,220 through December 31st, 2021.
I'm in for approval.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Juvenile Court.
Under Juvenile Court, we have Resolution 448. Authorizing an agreement with West Care Ohio Foundation, Inc. To provide assistance, advocacy, and support services for the family treatment diversion program. In an amount not to exceed 62,490 through September 30th, 2021.
I'm in for approval.
I second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Monday Community Correctional Institution.
Monday Community Correctional Institution, Resolution 449. Accept a grant amendment from Wright State University. For additional funds made available under the offender reentry program in an amount of 41,432.
I'm in for approval.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
County Administrator.
Under the clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on April 20th, 2021. Resolution 450, approval of bills. And Resolution 451, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the clerk's office.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have a light day in administrative services today. Now, we only have five resolutions. The first is 452. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the clerk's office. 453 solicits bids for the rivalled building OSI Suite, which is the Office of Strategic Initiatives. It's 50, Suite 5200 renovation project at an estimated cost of $264,100. Resolution 454 solicits proposals for ADA consulting services for the Risk Management Department. The last two resolutions extend price agreements for fire hydrants and parts for the Environmental Services Department through April 30th of 2022. The first is 455 with Everett J. Prescott Incorporated. And the last is 456 with Ferguson Enterprises Doing Businesses Ferguson Waterworks.
I'm in for approval.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Environmental Services, Matt.
Thanks, Commissioners. Got Resolution 457 to amend the agreement with GPD Group for consulting services. For construction of the Terrace Village Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project by extending the term through May 31st, 2022. Resolution 458 approved the planned specifications and estimated cost of $1,066,000. And solicit bids for the construction of the water reclamation facilities for the concrete tank rehabilitation at Eastern Regional Phase Three Project. And Resolution 459 authorized a temporary billing agreement with the Fu-Yao Glass America Incorporated.
I'm in for approval.
I second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
OMB, John.
Hi, good afternoon. OMB has four resolutions for your consideration this afternoon. 460 to authorize appropriation amendments. 461 authorize additional appropriations. 462 to authorize cash transfers. And 463 to authorize appropriation decreases.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Human Services, Michelle.
Good afternoon. Um, I am requesting to pull Resolution Number 21-0464. And replace it with Resolution 21-0472. The replacement is necessary in order to reflect the accurate dates of the Title 20 Plan for Job and Family Services. The original resolution only covers federal fiscal year 22. When in fact, the plan should cover both fiscal years 22 and 23.
Okay.
I'm in for approval.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Business Services, Chris.
Good afternoon. I have four resolutions and one late item for you today. Under Business Services, 0465 Extend Cares Healthcare Grant Program through December 31st, 2021. Pursuit to the Consolidated Appropriations Act 2021. 0466 Extend the Cares Childcare and Preschool Grant Program. Through December 31st, 2021 pursuant to the Consolidated Appropriations Act 2021. And under CED, we have 0467 Rebuilding Together Dayton in an Amount Not to Exceed $50,000 through February 15th, 2022. 0468 County Corp. in an amount not to exceed $500,000 through April 30th, 2022. And late item, under Business Services, 0471. Authorizes a memorandum of understanding with the Sheriff's Office. To collaborate in providing correction facility access, equipment, resources, career services, and pre-release services to inmates through December 31st, 2022.
I'm in for approval.
I second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And under County Commissioners, 21-0469 Accept the Oath of Office for Paul F. Bradley. On the merger in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 321 dot 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 O2.
I'm in for approval.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a hearing today, 21-0470 Air Hill Bridge Reconstruction Project.
Yes, Commissioners, as you know, we had the viewing last week virtually. And today's the hearing and Joe Dura, our project manager, will do the presentation again. Joe.
And Paul.
Mr. Dura and Mr. Gruner, anybody else is going to give testimony? This will be raised right hand, please sir. You swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much, Ellen.
Thank you much. Emily, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
Yep, go ahead.
Confirm everyone can see the PowerPoint presentation.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Again, my name is Joseph Durham with the Montgomery County Engineers Office. This is the public hearing for the Air Hill Road Bridge Reconstruction Project. The subject bridge is located in Perry Township immediately south-southeast of the city of Brookville. It is on Air Hill Road immediately west of the intersection of Keener Road. The zooming in on an aerial of the project location, the bridge is center of the image. There's residential, single-family unit homes in the immediate vicinity of this structure. Overall scope of the project is to replace the existing structurally deficient superstructure, the beams on this bridge. We're going to match the existing alignment. But improve the profile, so the horizontal is going to stay the same, the vertical profile of the road will change slightly to tie into the new structure. And then we'll upgrade the guardrail and safety grating. So image on the left is on the center line of Air Hill Road looking eastbound at the bridge. You can see the residential drive immediately adjacent to the bridge on the right. Photo on the right is looking southbound at the northern fascia beam. You can see the concrete is discolored, the white lines are indicative of efflorescence, that's salt water that is per made it through the concrete beams. These two photos are standing in the channel looking north at the southern fascia beam. Specifically, the big element is the photo on the right, which is a hole in that fascia beam. With these types of deteriorated conditions of the beams, it is our opinion that the superstructure, the beams, need to be replaced on this bridge. The substructure, the abutments, the walls that hold the beams up, they are in good condition and are able to be reused. So looking at property owners immediately adjacent to the bridge and in this case, it'll be one property owner that'll be directly impacted. There are four owners adjacent, want the one on the southwest corner of the bridge, bottom left. We will be requesting some temporary right-of-way. And that is to better tie their driveway into the newly reconstructed Air Hill Road. So again, looking at an aerial, you can see the driveway center bottom of this of this image. It is immediately west of our bridge. The purpose again is just to tie the new driveway into the newly constructed road. That way, there is a better vertical profile of the driveway. The property owner won't feel as much of a, won't feel a bump. This is a ground view of that driveway. It's an asphalt drive, will replace some kind with asphalt. There are curb and gutter on either side of this driveway. We will replace that curb and gutter and extend it to the limits of the new road. For sake of limits along the driveway, you could see the the little plants and posts just down the driveway away from Air Hill Road. Those are outside the limits and will not be impacted. For budget on this project, we've done the design in-house. For the cost of the temporary, that will be determined by a real estate appraiser. The estimated construction is roughly $443,000. And we have received a grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission for eligible costs on this project of $121,000. Regarding schedule, we have completed the design as of February 21. We are now entering into the right-of-way phase, which will take us through October of 21. We'll advertise in December and award the project in January of 22. With construction to take place between March 2022 and May of 2022. Air Hill Road itself will be closed for a maximum of 45 working days to accommodate this bridge work. Local traffic will be maintained, be able to access their driveways. So again, for that closure, the detour route that will be in place for those 45 working days. Will utilize Johnsville or will utilize Johnsville-Brookville, apologize. Westbrook Road and Wolf Creek Pike, and that'll take people around the closure on Air Hill Road. And with that, I'll open up to any questions.
No questions? No?
No. Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and stop sharing.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Hey, do I have a motion?
I move that we close the public hearing and determine that the project is needed. And the safety, convenience, and welfare for the traveling public requires the Air Hill Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in Perry Township. And we recognize it is also necessary to facilitate the right of the public to improvement and maintenance of and uninterrupted travel to county roads pursuant to Chapter 5553 of the Ohio Revised Code. And authorize the county engineer to proceed with right-of-way negotiations.
I second that.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, any comments by any citizens?
No comments.
Okay. Comments by County Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. This week, I had an opportunity and and a real privilege to speak on manufacturing and logistics panel for the Dayton Business Journal. And it was a great panel with a lot of really sharp people in the business community. And one of the things that we talked about doing the panel was the massive amount of growth that we're seeing right now. Especially around the Dayton International Airport. And of course, that growth means more jobs and more opportunity, more job training is coming to the area. And this is going to provide great opportunity for our residents to get an opportunity, not just to find a job, but to find a career. Now typically, we would have a job fair. And we usually have them two or three times a year. But of course, the pandemic has kept us from having those last year. And while the pandemic is not over, we recognize the need for skilled workers in a lot of jobs. If you talk to any business now, everybody is looking for people to come in and be a part of their organization as a worker. Additionally, we've got quite a bit of people that are moving off of unemployment. So we're having our first virtual job fair next week. And it will give us a focus on the construction industry. And we have both job seekers as well as businesses in the need of construction workers. And all are encouraged to sign up. This is a great opportunity. So please go to www.thejobcenter.org backslash construction. Again, that's www.thejobcenter.org backslash construction. Go there and register to take part in the job fair, whether you're doing the hiring or you're a job hunter, either which one. The job fair is Wednesday, May 5th from 11:00 to 4:00. Again, that's Wednesday, May 5th from 11:00 to 4:00. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Michael. We're really looking forward to when we can have in-person job fairs again because those are always so successful. So our workforce development team always stays busy, but they're also teaming up with our Office of Reentry for a new program that will help those in Montgomery County Jail that are transitioning back to society. So often, the Office of Reentry works with people that are returning from state prison or federal prison. And this one's going to be focused on those returning from the county jail. And we are working with a nonprofit partner who is connecting who's connecting with the people in the jail 180 days before release. And that's important because working with them those days helps to prepare them for a successful reentry. And the goal is to provide 400 incarcerated individuals with workforce services before their release. And that's a very great goal. I know it's going to be hard, but they are ready to start work and get going on this. So in the Dayton Business Journal, I think it was last week, there was a really great article about what they call second chance hiring. And I encourage anybody that gets a chance to read that about why, why do we, why is it important to hire returning citizens and give them a second chance? And the article is really good. It's written by, it's a guest columnist in the Business Journal. And you know, he talks about how the traditional talent pool is, it's tight. I mean, and we know this, just in our, in our region. So you know, the, the goal of it is to make sure that people know that there are people that deserve a second chance that are out there, become some of the best employees. I just read the book and you know, it just, it's one of those things that it's like, of course, that makes sense. But we want to make sure that our businesses in the community know that we have resources to help them if they'd like to hire reentering citizens. So you can always call our Workforce Development Department or our Reentry Department. And we're looking for employers because we really want to make these connections. Time and time again, I hear from employers that have hired some of our returning citizens. And they say they've been some of the best employees they've ever had. So you know, it's, it's, in a way, it's untapped talent. And second chance hiring can really work for businesses. But it also is great for our community. Because these men and women will come back and if they get a job, then they're going to be, you know, they're going to fit in the community a little bit better as far as paying taxes. That's one of the things, one guy, I'll never forget, he'd been in for like 30 years. And he said, Commissioner, I'm going to be able to be paying taxes now. And so you know, you, you look at that and it's, it's just a wonderful thing. But again, to employers that may hear this, we can connect you with the, with the right resources. Because there, there are, there are resources for hiring offenders, so. That's my plug for the day. Thank you.
And that's a great plug, Debbie. I hear that out in the community as well. And I just applaud everyone involved with the reentry programs, all, not only here with the county, but across you know, our entire region. Because that is untapped resources and they can be our future.
Thanks, Carol. And one more thing, one more thing I want to add.
Certainly.
I can't believe I didn't think about this. This is actually National Reentry Week. And so yesterday, we celebrated our, our 10 years of our Office of Reentry being open. I know, it's actually almost 11, but we didn't really celebrate, have a chance to celebrate this last year. But it was really nice to take a moment and recognize the success, why we worked so hard in this area. And, and there's just so many different programs. Again, this new one that we just approved with, with with getting people directly out of jail is going to be so important. We had a kickoff on Sunday that, at Grace Church for National Reentry Week. And I would encourage anyone, if you can, to, to find Grace Church on, whether it's on Facebook or YouTube. And watch that service. One of our returning citizens who, who's one of our stars really put the whole service together and and does a rap video that's just amazing. So as we celebrate this week, it's also important that we make those right connections. So, thank you.
That's awesome. All right, well, I think I am certainly noticing, not only is the spring weather warming up, but we're getting, a lot of more people are getting vaccinations, although I know Judy's going to talk about it at the end, that we're not near the, where we need to be. But it's really starting to pick up activity level. I'm really noticing that. And I had a couple of great experiences out in the community. The first one was on Friday. I went out and I was able to represent us. There was a huge group, I mean, I, I believe there was over 100 people there in the Westwood community. There's the Westwood Right Project, R-I-G-H-T. And they gathered on Friday morning and were, they'd been cleaning, getting junk out. There was other dignitaries there. You see our county recorder, Brandon McLean and Dayton City Commissioner Darrell Fairchild. But there was a ton of people there. It was pretty exciting. We had youth build Dayton there. They were doing a lot of digging and just rounding up trash. And we were planting. There was all kinds of community groups. I got to have the great honor of delivering two proclamations. First to Reverend Charles Foster and his wife Hazel. They're an amazing story. They've been working to revitalize the Roosevelt-Westwood neighborhood for the last 20 years. And they've lived in the area for over 50, but about 20 years ago, he bought the apartment building, House of Grace. And since then, they have bought like more than 16 apartment buildings as well as some homes. And totally rehabbed them and turned them around. And they did that, as he said, on credit. They did it on their own. And made them success and have really started the transformation. The other individual who couldn't be there, she had a death in the family. And I would love to meet her someday. She's been an inspiration in that community. Her name is Ms. Jeanette Adkins. And she has done everything you can imagine as far as leadership in that neighborhood over all these years. And she's still a board member. I think she's like, if not 90, getting close and can barely see. And she's still out there picking up trash and doing what she can. So she inspires everyone of all ages. So it was just really a great day and to see everyone coming together. So the whole theme there, as it often is, you know, to really, one property at a time, you can really turn things around. So you, you get some pictures of all of us. The second one that was fun, I always love when there are new businesses opening up. And so there was a ribbon cutting down at, it's called the Entrepreneur Connection. And Tay, the owner is, she is kind of giving space to other women who, um, you know, to get their products and their services advertised. It's going to, it's at the corner of Fourth and Wayne. And the other cool thing about it is she's really building kind of a, you know, a community where they're going to teach each other about all the facets of, of successful business. Financial planning, you know, just how you the, the obstacles you face in the road to success. So that was really cool. And you can see Sandy Gudorf and the Downtown Dayton Partnership were there to applaud their efforts. And that's the Entrepreneur Connection. And they actually had their grand opening on Sunday, so they are open now. And the final one was the BBA Cafe. And I know Judy, you were with me at that. That was another ribbon cutting. And that is down in the lower level of the six North Main and across from the old courthouse. And they are open for breakfast and lunch. And she, the owner, really talked about how they really want to give back to the community. That's at the core. And I, I think they've done a lot of, I, I know they offered delicious food. And we were quite tempted at the Red Velvet Cake. But we promised we would go back for lunch another day and try the whole, you know, to get a taste of that. But really a spirit of community. It's more than just a restaurant. It's how they can serve others. So it's just really great to be out in the community again and see people with, you know, when you're opening a business, you're an optimistic person and feeling that the time is right. So I hope that's the kind of spirit that spreads all across Dark County. Because we're coming out of this pandemic and I think we'll be, although we've got a lot to overcome, I think we'll be stronger than ever. So I applaud all of these individuals for all their efforts. And it was real honored to be there for all of those. So that was my week.
Yep. A busy week. And, and I agree, Commissioner, things are starting to open up more. And but last week, the three of us were at the, we celebrated Earth Day. And released what the Bring Your Green Challenge will be this year. The challenge this year is a giving garden. The challenge this year is a giving garden, which must incorporate green practices. A giving garden is one that gives back to the community to feed the hungry, and it does so in a green way through regenerative practices. Bring Your Green begins Monday, yesterday, and goes through October 1st. You can find more details at bringyourgreen.com. That's bringyourgreen.com. And it was a little cool there, but we did have, the three of us had a good time. And there were some, you know, young, you can see from the picture, some young kids there. So we had a good time that day. So it felt good to be out and out and about more. But I wanted to give a special thanks to two of our hardworking and dedicated animal care and control officers, Jessica France and Zane Renneke. A couple of weeks ago, they responded to a call about a stray dog stuck at Wolf Creek. Due to the rain, we'd received, water levels had risen, and our officers could not safely cross the creek to rescue the dog. Thankfully, with some quick thinking, the officers contacted our friends at the Trotwood Fire Department. Deputy Chief Barnett and Ladder Company 73 came out to assist. And with the use of their raft, they and Officer Reinike safely crossed the creek and rescued the dog, who is now at ARC and in the care of our skilled veterinarian. And I have a feeling if they can't find the owner, that sweet little thing just might be up for adoption very soon. Look at that face. How could you resist it? Thank you, guys, for doing that. Bless her, bless his heart. Anyway, all right, here we go, the final thing, final thing. You always know it's the end of this, of our meeting. You know, as, as Carolyn said, it's not over yet. So please, please, please wear your mask. We're going to get to the end of this very, very soon. There you go. Paul has his. Stay safe, safely distanced from each other and wash your hands. And please, please get your vaccine. You know, you don't even have to have an appointment hardly anymore. So please don't, don't forget that. Thank you. And our next meeting, I can't believe I'm saying this, May, come on, May 4th, right here at 1:30. Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
She's muted.
I see her lips moving.
All right. Okay, there we go. All right. All those in favor?
Aye. Have a great week.
Thanks. Thanks, everybody.